Yep.
All right, I am calling the Village Board of Trustees of November twenty seven, twenty twenty three, the order, roll call please.
Trustee Braden.
Here.
Trustee Brenner.
Here.
Trustee Borcar.
Here.
Trustee Brooklyn.
Here.
Trustee Polmickowski.
Here.
Trustee Calvin.
Here.
President Linco.
Here. Stand for a pledge of the region. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Republic of America, which stands on the nation. In this hall, the living, the dead, and all. All right. This is public comment, this is an opportunity for anyone to address the village board on any issue. Please observe the time limit of three minutes while the village board encourages input from residents that may not discuss or act on any issue that is not duly noticed on the agenda. Do we have anybody that would like to speak at a public meeting, public comment, I guess?
There's someone walking in.
Well, no, all right.
All right, anybody on the internet?
Nobody on, hands up.
Okay. Go to consent agenda upon request of any trustee, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration under general business, does anybody want to separate any of the items on the consent agenda? All right, I have a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion to accept the consent agenda.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda, any, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All polls same, don't move. All right, we go to report of village officers, there's two items for me, one, back this summer, both Doug and I and Melissa and Chris Gavin met to talk about possibilities and ideas of bringing the community together under positive circumstances. So I'm looking at having a annual meeting at the end of March for the community. Probably contact them to see if they want to be part of that, are there any trustees that would like to be part of organizing that?
I mean, I can, if you don't have anybody.
Okay, so you'll be hearing more of that, go ahead.
I would be interested to also if the voice wouldn't break, that will.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, we'll, we'll kind of figure that out.
It's also, there's also a board meeting then, I know it's coming up with December, but.
Yeah, okay, we'll do, I'll keep that in mind, thanks. And the second thing, just a reminder of being cautious in discussing items on the agenda or village business between emails that can be considered a walking. For, thank you, wow, it's gonna be a rough night, so just be very cautious on that, we can't do that. Save the discussion for the meeting if we can. That's all I have, number two, village vice president.
Congratulations to Jeff Chitso, well, did I pronounce that right, completed two years of service on November eighth. And that is really all I have. Oh, Saturday is the tree lighting down at Esther Square and they're doing a bunch of Santa things and so forth, so look for Santa and Little Tree Lane.
It's on the village Facebook page.
Yeah.
Was it all day events?
All right, other trustee reports. All right, village administrator.
Okay, I've quick, two quick updates, I completed the village insurance policy renewals for the new calendar year twenty twenty four, that information's been updated and submitted, and I got new policy information out to our department heads for the village vehicles. The village social media archive, I've reached out and talked to Sharp Archive about becoming the new archiving source for the village, I spoke with Archive Social and our contract runs through the end of calendar year twenty twenty three, so Sharp Archive will become our official archiving provider effective January first, and I'm in the process of getting all of our website information updated with them. Lastly, the, the item that is noted on the agenda here, the national PFAS settlement update, I included some information in the packet related to this for your review, and just to provide a little bit of context, we had this discussion related to the PFAS settlement during our recent staff meeting. The wells in the village have all been tested, they all came back clean, so monetarily, the village won't stand to gain much, if anything, by being a participant in this national PFAS settlement. But if you opt out of this settlement, we won't incur additional charges related to the testing of the wells, which will be a requirement to participate in the settlement, so we'll have some upfront costs if we do elect to participate. Very little in terms of monetary gain if we see it through based on the way that the calculation is determined for the settlement payment. So my recommendation at this point will be for the village to opt out, and we still retain the right in the future, if anything did come to light related to our wells, to be able to take legal action independently against those two settlement providers.
Is that a decision we have to make now, or is it on the agenda?
It, it isn't on the agenda, this is a recommendation that I was gonna make tonight, if you feel that it is something that needs to be done or brought before the board for a decision, we may have to have a special meeting because of the timelines involved. The opt-out timeline deadline is the eleventh of December, I believe.
If we do nothing, then what?
If you do nothing, then you both legally are declining the abilities to be involved in the settlement, and you are relinquishing the right to take future actions, you have to tell them one way or another if you intend to opt in as part of the settlement or opt out, by doing nothing, you actually are losing legal, future legal representation rights.
Well, Michael brings up a good point, since it's not on the agenda as an action item. We're not going to be into actions at all.
Correct.
So.
If someone wishes to, that the reason it was being brought forward is so that at the future agenda items, if anyone wishes to bring it as a future topic, just allow you an opportunity to educate yourselves, and sorry, the timelines, we're just getting legal advice on this from the League of Wisconsin Municipalities just last week. So this is relatively new, but we are coming up to a deadline where we do need to make some formal decisions. I'm just letting you know tonight, this would be my recommended choice of action of where to go, because it allows us the abilities in the future to take action if we determine we need to.
Basically what you're telling us, that you're gonna opt out, somebody makes it a future agenda because they wanna do a settlement now. That's pretty much what I'm getting the drift.
Is that, is that what you're looking at, you're going to opt out? And if people have a problem with that, then you were expecting them to put it on the agenda for us, they have that discussion?
The hope was that if anyone had any issues with that decision, you had an opportunity to research it, you could bring it up at the end of the night that you'd like to have a either special board meeting or something brought forth to let, you know, us know that you'd like to have a discussion related to it. I'm sorry on the timelines, maybe it would have been best to have it as an agenda topic, but monetarily, from what we can see, there isn't anything to gain from it. We're actually gonna lose money by testing something we've already had tested that proved that it was clean.
We'll just talk about it again to future due to topics.
Sure. Certainly. All right. Village Department Heads or other reports, Bobby?
Just gonna remind everyone, it's time to think about the April local election, so on the election in April will be the four-year term for municipal judge, Jerome Gerst is our incumbent for that. And then we'll have three seats for village trustee currently held by Paulie Braden, Michael Polmickowski and Cameron Brooklyn. You can first circulate papers December first, all that information is on our website, otherwise I can print out copies for you, you can pick up. If you are not going to rerun, you do have to fill out a declaration of non-candidacy, where that is due December twenty second. And the nomination papers are due January second at five. And then also I saw that today is so-called driver appreciation days, those ones, all of our so-called drivers are sitting in the audience, good luck to all representatives.
All right, thank you, oh, Mike.
I said one thing.
Good.
Now, I thought tonight would be a good time to, I'd like to congratulate trustee Sarah Borcar. Being the first ever queen of the court. Probably playing pickleball. Sixteen players and Sarah told the most points.
Congrats.
Anyone who'd like private lessons?
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah.
All right, we'll go to general business, I don't see Henry out here. Oh, he's not here, but his parents are, oh, there she is.
Yeah, he, I think he has the time wrong.
Okay. All right, can I have a motion to postpone item one for forty-five minutes or so? All right, any discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Number two, discussion and possible action regarding village hall parking regulation. Who's presenting this?
I can, because it came to the, what that public safety committee. But, so with the new bank going in next door, in particular with like the construction vehicles and people parking, it was brought up by the heads of village, department heads to say, hey, it would, you know, be difficult for people to like come and do their business at the village, like pay their utility bills or, you know, whatever they need. You, you know, if, if the spots are all taken for people using the bank, and so they had just asked the public safety committee to kind of evaluate, like, you know, would there be a problem with, with some signs and some kind of guidance on signage in the village parking lot? To indicate that this would be for, you know, village parking only. And we took it up and we had a good discussion and we had talked about probably saying just like village business only during business hours, like it wouldn't be just like, you know, twenty-four seven. And then we had talked about how, you know, we wouldn't have to probably put it like in front over here where, you know, there's the kind of parking that comes in on the street at the diagonal, you know, we, that, that could remain the same. And then we didn't think it would need to be like all of a parking lot, like down by the police station and stuff, could probably remain fine. So it would just really be kind of over here in front of the bank, just in case there was someone who, you know, needed to pay utilities and wanted to park easily.
So the sign would be just one sign as you drive in, or you're talking about every stall would have one?
We didn't get that detail, so that could be something that we discuss here and get more detailed on, or we, I don't know what committee would decide on like how the sign should be here, where they should be here and all that stuff.
All right, comments, Cody?
You mentioned it was construction vehicles, now that construction is over, is it a continued problem with parking?
The concern was that the parking lot at the bank is already very small, and so that if you had, you know, a few people using the bank or whatever, that, you know, you could have, or employees at the bank, you know, they could, you know, the spots right out front could get taken up and it's somewhere, they're probably paying their water bill or whatever. You know, if there was another event or a meeting going on, they might have a little more difficulty parking.
Was there that much traffic here during the day? Coming in and out of the middle of town?
When we have meetings and stuff, like there's times that both does and that. And then now, people coming in to pay tax bills, December, January, this time of year. It's not all day on the day.
Michael, you wanted to say something? I, I, wait.
I, where do the village employees park?
Right, where, where we're talking, I, 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 since I've been, I can tell two employees park in the stalls that are diagonal, and generally there's three that are there, and Mike parks on the road. I've got him almost memorized where everybody parked, it's almost totally consistent.
And how many spots are there? Over there?
Well, the problem is we hit three dumpsters in the corner. I think when we did, I think there's twenty-six, twenty-six total, counting these two, I think.
Oh, I mean, just like, right, like Fox Street Park.
Yeah, yeah, well, you have the two handicapped, and then you probably have seven or eight before you hit the first dumpster.
I think you're right, total's like twenty something.
Yeah.
It's twenty from one end.
Here's, here's kind of where, I'm, I'm just wondering if this is a solution looking for a problem. When the bank came in, they were three or four spots short of zoning code. But they, and they came for a waiver, and the discussion was that because banking has changed, a lot of people don't use the bank, and I, for someone who's a dinosaur in that ninety-five percent of my banking, I go to the banks, most of the time the parking lots have been empty, there's very rare that there's more than one or two cars. And I think with, when we talked about the bank, because you can park, there's street parking on both sides of the road. I really think if the bank has their employees park on the road, I don't think there's just gonna be this overflow of cars going into our area, and quite frankly, the two main parking spots are handicap, which are rarely used, but I would have no problem if a customer of the bank needed a handicap spot because of the van and stuff, and how hard it would be to maneuver and that van can use it, but the only thing that came out of plan was that we wanted a yellow line down the middle of brewery to divide the two roads. That, that was the only modification that I remember that was discussed or concerns brought up on this, so I'm, I'm just wondering if maybe the best action would be to wait to see if it becomes a problem, and if it becomes a problem, then we address it, because it seems like right now, we're just guessing, and I understand when they had full construction or both sides of the street were construction workers, there were some of the vans in our parking lot in there. So I, I, I understand where people saw and where that might have brought up, but with the way banking is now, and they said, the bank was very adamant that with the waiver that their business plan would not be negatively impacted with the fewer spots, and I, I don't know if we need to take action, Doug?
I was just gonna concur, I know that way quite a bit, and I noticed especially during construction, those vehicles kind of all over the place. And I, I certainly from banking at Lake Bridge and the normal and Park Bank, I noticed. I'd much rather, you know, walk in the park bank and then monitor, if you take that down in six months, that's a submission.
Right, Cody?
So there is like documentation that the bank was given a waiver?
Yeah. Sure, we, we approved it at plan, we approved it, though, I don't know if the wa, the waiver is the correct term, but the, the yeah, there's only required, was it three or four more? I can't, I can't remember the numbers, I think the square footage made eleven, you have eight maybe?
Yeah.
Something like that, plus they have a drive-through teller, which is new, where they, even now, you can do all your teller business right on the drive-through, which is very interesting.
I just find it funny, we gave permission or changed it for zoning, and then we would put up signs that says no parking.
Well.
Now.
Yeah, we're talking, we're talking about, we're talking about the bank. We, we never talked about the bank using the parking lot, okay?
Got you, okay, that's what I was.
No, 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 that was never even brought up.
I mean, I think that at the time it was brought up that they would use the street for parking, so I think Todd Peterson said when he was on asking first originally for the daycare, you and he had said can the employee park there, he said yes, it's public parking. I mean, it is public parking, so, I think back when, but Todd couldn't make it to.
Yeah, and I don't, I wouldn't, I don't think I would do that, we can restrict public parking we do down by Main Street and where pizza places, there's signs that restrict parking, even though those are public.
I don't think there's any issue waiting to see, I mean, I mean, I think the, the problem would be is that there's a lot more people going to the bank than we think, but we don't know, you know, like you said, that's probably unlikely, or, you know, if the employees decide that they're gonna park, you know, right there, and then they're gonna tie up, you know, some of the prime spots or whatever, and then to get our village employees parking, and all of a sudden it could be a situation where someone has to park kind of far away to come pay their parking tax, and at that point, if it's an issue, department heads bring it back and.
No, I, I, I'm gonna tell you a hundred percent that this parking lot should go for residents needing to do village business. I, 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 I'm not debating that at all, I just don't, I don't know if there's really gonna be a problem, and quite frankly, our employees usually take up quite a few of the spots that are closest to, you know, they would be, it would be quicker to park on the street and walk in the bank than on the other side of the dumpsters. Michael, did you want?
No, that I just agree, I just want to say it becomes more of an issue with, we want to have people be able to get into the building, we could encourage staff to park over here along this lot, which leaves all the spaces in front of the building open for people to come in and use it, and doing that with people for the bank, if they wanted to, they're gonna have to walk down, but you'd be able to monitor that a little bit better, just my thought, just. You just see how it goes, but I think they're doing it right away, Bobby?
As I say, we actually do have a number, because we need to park out front, you have to step up. So a lot of our elderly people will park in the side lot so they can come over.
Actually, okay. Good, well.
So what is the flavor of the group?
Monitor, yeah, I'm ready to wait a little bit and see if it becomes an issue.
We're all good with that? All right. All right, number three. Refer to finance advisory and enhancement committee review and analysis of emergency medical service across Plains. I put this on, and I want to make it very, very clear, and I would like everybody, I'm not on social media to watch this, because I know the rumors are gonna fly around, we are not dealing at all or looking at all of the actual service that is being provided, the medical service. That is outstanding, there's been zero complaints, I give those employees kudos for doing the job that they're doing. What this, what the finance is gonna look at is the structure and the administrative part of it, and that is very problematic. So that is what we'll be doing, and just ideas would be looking at what other districts, how they operate and how they handle the administrative parts. But I just want to make that very, very clear, that it has nothing to do with the actual medical service that a group is providing.
Can, can I ask what you mean by that, is that just like how they handle their payroll, like is it?
Yeah, it would be, it would be, yes, it's all the elements of the administrative side of it.
Would it not be better to keep it in-house or to be without it?
Well, just, well, I don't want to throw any, it, it's, what, what we want to do is look at like we've done with the number of other things, what are other EMS services? How are they handling things, so I don't want to throw any ideas until we get the data and stuff, but I want to make it very clear that that's what we're gonna be looking at. We're not looking at the service part of it. Do I, oh?
It's just what, I mean, for the committee to take up something, there's like a problem is the wrong word, but I mean, there's something that we think could be more efficient, what is that?
Well, it's not that, I guess it's the concern, all right, let's, let's look at it, we're gonna be going on our third chief in four years. Our first chief is in legal problems tied to that. If you looked at the financial impact that, that agency placed on us was extreme. And we'll be talking about that later, so those are some of the things that we're looking at, I, the last thing, I'll, I'll be honest with you, at the last meeting, I was taken totally off guard, they were ready to appoint a new chief that wasn't on the agenda, and I had spent quite a bit of time convincing people that we were in violation of not only the open meeting law, but also that on a public that there should be a process. So there's just a whole lot of issues that I feel need to be addressed. Since we are paying almost sixty percent of the bill, which means sixty percent of the customers are Cross Plains residents, we have a huge vested interest in making sure that things run as best as they can. And again, it has nothing, I'm gonna emphasize, please put this in the minutes, we are not dealing with the medical service.
The quality of the care patients is.
Right, or the, the workers that are providing.
Yep.
And we're not even looking at individuals, it's more system.
Are you looking for a motion?
Yeah, I will, but Cameron's got one.
Sorry, I got another question. Um, is the EMS structured similar to Fire though, so like even if we find our finance committee?
No, they're, they're very, very different. And here's where, again, I think we're getting too much into, is this why I like finance to look at it? There's a huge difference in running a volunteer service. EMS is almost all paid now. So when you get to pay, it's much more complex, much more complex. And that's where we're having, where I believe is one of the problems, we haven't changed as we've gone from volunteer to pay. Go ahead.
I guess, sorry, I was asking like, there's still a board?
Yeah.
And I guess like, because e- even if we went to the fire board and said we wanted to change something, right, we're only three votes out of nine.
That is correct.
So I guess that's what I'm trying to, does EMS have a similar structure where even if the finance committee says we need to change this, we only have a third of the votes to possibly accomplish something?
That, that is a possibility.
Okay.
But there's always, I, I don't want to get into a lot of options, let us, all I'm asking for is let this finance committee, I think it has proven itself that it does an extremely good job and is very detailed orientated. We're gonna have a subject matter expert on the committee, Tim Hillenbrand is on our committee. He was the chief when it was a volunteer service, he still volunteers about that. So we have that connection and that subject matter expert, so I would just say, let, let us do our job, it's gonna come back here, and then we'll have all this good discussion, because right now, I'm just spitballing. Because I, I don't want to say something that I don't have the information to back.
I'll make a motion to refer to finance advisory and energy enhancement committee review and analysis, emergency medical service request.
I'll sign that. All right, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the polls same, don't move. Is, is Henry here yet? No, okay, thanks, raise your hand when he gets here, all right? But, thanks. What's that? Perfect, thank you. All right. Discussion, oh no, public hearing, do I have a motion? Do I have a motion to go into public hearing for the? And it should be the twenty twenty-four budget. So can, can, can the motion, can you please actually state that you're making a motion to go into the public hearing for the twenty twenty-four budget?
I'll make a motion to go into the public hearing for the twenty twenty-four budget.
All right, I have a motion in second discussion. All right. Oh, yeah, we do. Thank you. Roll call.
Dusty Calabasas?
Yes.
Dusty Brandon?
Yes.
Dusty Pomacowski?
Yes.
Dusty Borclun?
Yes.
Dusty Brunner?
Yeah.
Dusty Ford?
Yes.
Yes, all right. We're in public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak uh at the public hearing on the budget? All right, is there anybody on the internet that would like to speak?
No, yes.
Nothing?
Yep.
All right. Since I'm not seeing anybody or hearing from anybody, do I have a motion to close the public hearing on the twenty twenty-four uh budget?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on the twenty twenty-four budget.
One second.
All right, I have a motion in second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All polls same, so moved. Number five. Discussion impossible action modification of the twenty should be twenty twenty-four preliminary budget. You want discussion first or amendments uh motion first?
Whatever.
All right, let's have a motion, please. Uh, so I'm looking for approval, cause we wanna stay in the positive of the modification of the twenty twenty-four preliminary budget.
Sorry, what modification?
Well, that's what.
So I was confused when I saw this item on the agenda. And it was just taken from last year, apparently, so I don't know what it's supposed to mean. Um, I guess this is just kind of an opportunity for anyone to say, well, propose a change?
No. This is because of how EMS came in fifty thousand dollars more than we had talked about in the September or the October meeting. You made modifications by using income uh uh investment money and uh reducing the police officers' insurance from family to single to make up the difference. So we were not, basically it was to cover the gap of us being over the tax levy. That's what this is about.
Okay. That was all posted on mine now, right?
Well, yeah, it's been out, but.
So then when, when the motion just be to approve the twenty twenty-four budget or no?
No, well.
That's not what we used to talk about.
But here's the thing with that. It, it's, yes, you could have done it that way. This would have been cleaner if people feel uncomfortable pulling the money from these two things and wanted done a different way. This is where the discussion should be. Judy?
Can we do anything about the EMS being over? I mean, is it too late? Or what can we do?
We cannot do anything about that. Cameron was correct. It's a district. I was the only one that voted no. The others three jurisdictions voted yes. So part of the agreement in there is that majority rules. So at this point, for this budget, we cannot do anything about it. So, so the, the, what we can have control is how we deal with the old overage.
I make a motion to approve the modifications to the twenty twenty-four preliminary budget.
I'll second that motion.
All right, discussion. Judy then myself and Michael, did you wanna say?
No, I just wanted to make that motion.
What, does anybody have any suggestions, Bobby or Brian, how we can recoup what we have, what we were not budgeted for? Is there anything that you're thinking we can kind of, yeah, that goes back, whatever you think?
Well, they they balance the budget already with the, the modification that's in the, the memorandum here.
Which is asking, are there other options?
Okay.
Because it is more than what we thought originally. That's what I said.
The, the answer is, yes. There's three million dollars out there. There could be. Here, here's, here's what I want everybody to understand about this. We are starting to build a house of cards with this. If anybody here thinks that our police officers will never use family insurance, I think they're kidding yourself. This is a short-term solution and it clearly has to be fixed. For sure as a priority next year. The income, the investment income generally helps us stay in line with our fund balance, but our policy of staying twenty percent to twenty-five percent. Um, having that in savings of what our total operating costs are. So we have to be extremely cautious. This is not in the, because this came in such a short term. Um, there'll be other discussion later on that might factor this, but right now, everybody should, if we vote yes on this, everybody's gotta really understand that this is very short-term and we're really in dangerous grounds here. Using a reduction in health insurance, thinking that our officers are not ever gonna use family is not a real solid practice. And that's a big ticket item. I just wanna make sure everybody understands that going into this, what you're voting for.
I have a quick question. Bobby, I was just reading, right now, um how much is the general fund over the twenty percent? Like yeah, or just even a dollar on it, because we made, you know, a hundred fifty thousand in interest. I mean, isn't that's like a hundred fifty thousand dollar hit or at least then? That wasn't.
I, I don't have a dollar amount, but for twenty twenty-three, we will add a good, a good amount.
To the fund balance, over the twenty percent?
Yes. We were over to the twenty percent at the end of last year.
Right, so all that interest is just over, over the twenty percent.
Right, well, we did um use some of the interest income to cover the overdoing mowing costs for this year.
Oh, okay.
So that's what saved us on the mowing. But.
Got you.
We still will add to the fund balance this year again.
But you don't know exactly how much.
Bobby, can you just may I, do they try, but if the employee wages increase five point three percent, if we increased it at this and even five percent, what that would save us?
The five point three percent is all wages, part-time and full-time, general, water, utility and sewer. So it's not just full-time wages on the left. Not quite as. I mean, I can't do it to make money, that's what I say.
The point, point is it's pretty low.
I have a question. What is this paper?
That'll be for my discussion.
Which is gonna be on the agenda.
It'll be sixty.
Sixty in the general.
Okay, Steve, cause.
Say it.
Sixty.
That's okay.
I was just wondering, cause it's all part of the same budget discussion.
It is. But I think we got it. I think it would be wise to do this separate.
Okay, well, that's what I was asking.
Yep, no, no.
I always roll back to this and stuff's all in the general fund anyway.
Correct.
That is absolutely correct. So I'm willing to wait till sixty to really get into the nuts and bolts of it.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, let's do a roll call, vote.
Dusty Pomacowski?
Yes.
Dusty Borcar?
Yes.
Dusty Borclun?
Yes.
Dusty Brunner?
Yes.
Dusty Brandon?
Yes.
Dusty Calabasas?
No.
Doesn't like salt.
Yes. All right, I would like a motion to go to item number one.
I will make a motion to move to item number one.
I will second that motion.
All right, I have a motion in a second to go to item number one. All right. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, all the same. I like, Henry, why don't you come on up and click on that mic for us, please? There you go. And why don't you explain to the group what you're, what you're doing and what you've done?
Okay, so again, my apologies for being late. Um, I just went practice. Uh, so Jay reached out to me for my eagle project. Um, he talked about um coins that were minted during the late eighteen hundreds and early nineteen hundreds at Cross Plains. And so I went around town um getting pictures of these coins. They had really neat uh our town, like businesses that work from Cross Plains. Um like I said, in the late eighteen hundreds, and we have coins from um salmon lumber over in town. Um, Bob Salmon helped me get all those coins for pictures. Um, like some of these coins are five cents for like a beer, five cents for like a, a cup of milk and myself like that at the grocery store. And um the problem was back in this time, they didn't have like enough coins to sort of deal it. So they needed to make their own coins to use to trade for bigger services. So this is what we did. And um I think it's pretty unique for to our town that we had a bunch of different businesses on your own coins. And then you can see here, this is one of the coins next to a dime, just to show it's like actual size.
So cool.
So talk a little bit on, this is your eagle project, right?
Yeah, yeah, so.
A little process on that, so they understand.
In, in scouting, we have um ranks and the final rank is getting your eagle. And what part of getting your eagle is your eagle project? And so it's a project that gives back to your community in some way. A lot of, a lot of people do stuff with like building, building stuff like bridges and stuff like that. And I went with this method. Um, doing a project like this and uh your eagle project is trying to give back to community, like I said, and um I think this is gonna be great in the village hall. And uh this helped me get my eagle, so, yeah.
Does anybody have any questions for Henry?
So that's where you're pointing on that going is to do the twelve?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, can it go up in the old one first?
Yeah, yeah. We'll put it here, for sure. Thank you.
Yeah, very much.
That's a big achievement.
How long?
Yeah.
How long, yeah, how long is the journey to becoming a leader?
Um, I think I got into Boy Scouts when I was eleven, so seventy years, yeah. You gotta get it before you're eighteen and I got it two days before.
And just so you know, that was uh cut and done by uh Chuck Don at the frame shop.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Are you gonna just leave that with us tonight then? Um, or are you gonna?
I, my eagle port of honor, I like.
Oh, sure. No, 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 no. When you're done, when you get through your whole process, just let us know.
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you very much.
I invented a board, it's a single.
Yeah, I coached them in football a couple of years.
That's a good one, Mr. Eric.
All right. Item six, discussion impossible action on the twenty twenty-four budget. It's not twenty twenty-three, it's the twenty twenty-four. We'll take each one of them, uh each letter at a time. Letter A, capital fund. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the capital fund in twenty twenty-four budgets.
We have a second. Second. I have a motion in a second. Open up for a discussion.
I don't have any issues with anything on here. It's just I just wanna say that depending on how we wanna pay for this next year, if we're gonna be running, we have money over twenty percent or general fund. Kinda think that that could be used to pay these capital expenses without taking out loans for it. Especially we're gonna be building a new village home and trying to keep down our debt levels, especially increased interest rates, granted it'll take away our interest income, but we don't have a debt in doing so. It's something to consider.
I, I, I think that's a good valid point. I think what we'll have to do is look at, once we get into the first quarter. Once all the books are closed and we looked at it and look at what capital and how we're gonna do it. Anything else? We're gonna do roll calls on all of these, just cause they're all budget related. So roll call, vote.
Dusty Brandon?
Yes.
Dusty Calabasas?
Yes.
Dusty Pomacowski?
Yes.
Dusty Borcar?
Yes.
Dusty Borclun?
Yes.
Yeah.
Doesn't like.
Yes. All right, B, debt service fund. And I have a motion.
I make a motion to approve the two thousand and twenty-four debt service fund.
One second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Discussion. All right, roll call, vote, please.
Dusty Borclun?
Yes.
Dusty Borcar?
Yes.
Dusty Pomacowski?
Yes.
Dusty Calabasas?
Yes.
Dusty Brandon?
Yes.
Dusty Brunner?
Yes.
Doesn't like salt.
Yes. All right, C. I have the tid fund. I have a motion.
I make a motion to approve the, the tid fund.
Uh, twenty twenty-four tid fund.
Twenty twenty-four tid fund.
Thank you. Do I have a second? All right, I have a motion in a second. Discussion. Yeah, you're monitoring uh that, right?
Yep.
All right, um roll call, vote, please.
Dusty Brunner?
Yes.
Dusty Brandon?
Yes.
Dusty Calabasas?
Yeah.
Dusty Borclun?
Yes.
Dusty Borcar?
Yes.
Dusty Pomacowski?
Yes.
Doesn't like salt.
Yes. All right, D, the general fund. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four general fund.
I'll second.
I have a motion in the second. Discussion. Well, I have some items I would like to discuss on this. If I, I did a handout, there should be a handout for you. Um, and it's gonna be like, it's thick, but it's gonna be very thin. Um, it was at your table. Um, I just wanna
Oh, thanks.
Yeah, um, this is my eleventh budget for the, the village. And I have to say that I think this is as it presented, it's probably the most unfair and non-sustainable of the other prior ten that I have been involved in. My goal tonight on this is I'm hoping I can uh have three other trustees vote this down, so we can make a fair, more sustainable budget. Some of you are probably worried that it's too late for that. Um, it's not. We have done it in the past where we have passed a budget in early December. The true hard deadline is by the eighteenth of December, tax bills have to be in the mail. The county needs about three days to process, so we have about two weeks um to go. So what I'd like to do is quickly go through the handout that I have given you. Um, and then I have a couple recommendations and process if it if I'm uh, if we decide to change it. So the first one, what you have is our agreement with our administrator. Uh, the, the department head committees, if you read their report, they eliminated him from uh the process. If you read the compensation, which is number three, the last sentence, only the board can make modifications to his contract. And that he is in his third year, which means he should be treated like all other employees. Because we didn't do this right now, he has, his comparison is by far the lowest to the communities that we used as comparisons. There is a department head making more than he is. Another department head that is making twenty-four dollars less. Another department head that is making twenty four dollars less. I think that needs to be, uh, corrected. You can go all the way to page. Uh, page two and three just shows what people are making and you can see. So then the next one is the. Um. The longevity, page four, you look at page four. It's the, everything you've seen, you've seen before except for what's been handwritten. So since we are using. Middleton, Verona, Wanakee and Mountain Hoar as comparisons, I thought it was only fair. That we compare our longevity. Proposal to what these other communities have. So I went and looked at the employee handbook. For all the communities except for Verona, theirs is not posted. Wanakee, Mountain Hoar does not have a longevity schedule. That I could find. In their employee handbook, I talked to H R and Verona. Their scale is ten percent over twenty one years. It shows six years, one percent eleven, you can read that. Middleton ended their longevity and twelve thirty one of twenty twenty one for all new and. Employees, current employees must choose between the longevity program or the market rate plan, they don't get both. Their longevity is twenty one percent over twenty three years. And the scale on how you see that, how it's, uh, laid out. So if you look at. For us. When we hit, when our employees hit three years. They'll be at nine percent. In Verona, they wouldn't be at anything, at Middleton, they would be at one percent. At seven years. Verona, their employees would be at one year. We would be at. Uh, just going into the nine to eleven percent. They're not comparable and my. Uh, feeling they're not equal at all and, uh. I believe that needs to be addressed, now to show you the financial impact, if you go to page five. And you look at the. The second to last column on the right. Which is, which states, and this again was handed to us, twenty twenty four salary of placed incorrect longevity step. You look at those numbers, the far right column is the difference between what they're going to be. What the proposal is for twenty twenty four. And how short we would be. From where they should be using the longevity plan. And it ends up, we're a hundred and twenty five thousand, seven hundred and fifty. Three dollars short. Now, I don't think anybody in this room believes that the village across plains. Next year will be able to come up with a hundred and twenty five thousand. Seven hundred and fifty three dollars, and that is just a snapshot. Of the twenty twenty four year, you need to add. More, some of our employees will be going into another longevity, there'll be a cola raise most likely. And then some will be moving potentially up in grade, so this is. Starting right now. We're looking at an unsustainable. Plan right now, there's just absolutely no way we can make this kind of money. Uh, right now, and it needs, and I know there was discussion on some people saying, well, if you can't pay, you just. Uh, hold off on it, that's fine, but this is a huge chunk and. To go into. A year knowing we're gonna be this far in the hole. Just. Does not make sense to me. Well, that's the, the whole thing, and then the next one that. Uh. Page six. Starts. This is the grade system, this is currently what you're looking at right now, is currently what the handbook has. This is the grade system and how it's. Broken up. As you can see, it it's, when it gets to the skill level, it's not very detailed. So the committee, the department heads committee did an outstanding job. On defining this in their early version, if you look at page seven, it starts that. I'm not crazy about the word of. Ban, but when you look at the definitions, it clearly breaks all. The responsibility, authority, decision-making power and stuff like that, which is clearly what. The grading system should, it also talks about the authority of it. And that's exactly what that grade was supposed to do, you look at a job description. You look at these elements of it, you placed it in the right grade. So that just goes through what it is, page ten. Is the effort on where. Grades were currently at. And where they moved them to. Right? All still pretty good, standard, solid decision. But when you go to the last page. They ended up scratching all that. And what they did is they changed it instead of. People's job description going into a grade, they basically took the grade, and if you really look at this. It's just a vertical. Longevity. Because most of the the changes. To move from one grade to the next is experience. Which is basically time on. So what we have right now. If this stays solid is we have a longevity. That's horizontal. And now we have another longevity that goes vertical. It's just not fair to the taxpayers and it's not workable. This is not. Sustainable for us and for us to pass something that we absolutely know, there's no chance of, of making. Um, we shouldn't, and the grading needs to go back. To the decision-making, authority, responsibility. Um, job descriptions, cause now we have nothing. All right, so. What I'm asking is that. We vote this down tonight. And we have a couple options. What my, the first option, what I'd like to see, which I think would be the best. Is we get a group. That meets this week. It would be Brian, Bobby, myself, a trustee at large. And the department head at large, and we sit down and if we see if we can work something out, that is actually. Fair and also sustainable. Now for meetings. I know it's a hassle for a lot of people, but a week from today, we have a plan. So half of the people here on around this table will be there, Brian, myself, Judy and Doug. On Tuesday, we have finance, there'll be three of us there, there'll be Bobby, Michael and myself, we could meet either of those. Both those meetings are at six thirty, so we could meet at six with a special meeting. On the agenda, the other option on the agenda, we are moving. Our meeting, cause it falls on Christmas, we could move it to the eleventh, which would be the last day, and we could bring this back. On the eleventh after the group has met. So that would be, I think, the best. To get everybody a chance to get their input. The other option, if people are dead set on doing something tonight. There's an option we could do tonight is again, go this down and then we would sus. Temporarily suspend the longevity plan and the grade plan. Until, uh, until it can be reviewed and brought back no later than. Uh. On or before the March. Twenty fourth board meeting, that would be four months from now. We could go ahead, instead of using. Uh, the seven thousand dollar cap. We could cap. Uh, department head raises by to six percent. And non-department head, uh, raises to nine percent. We could do something like that, and then, yeah, I know it's still high, but it's lower than what we have right now, and it would be easy and quick. To do, and then what we would do is once we formulated. The longevity and the grade, we could then, it's kinda backwards, we could then fill in anything over three percent. So if on there, if you go back to page. Um. Two and three, you would just go down to the column that has percent increase, and that would either drop. They would drop down to either six percent or nine percent, but there's a number of them that are already under that, they're eight point five, they're five, they're six, they're three. They're eleven, I would also ask if we do that. The third part would be that Brian's, uh, increase goes from three percent to six percent, that would take care of. Uh, him being, uh, the highest paid, uh, village employees. And it would bring him up. All of three percent on the comparison. He's at seventy six, I think it would bring him up to seventy nine.
Would you be increasing twenty six percent on?
No, 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 I think, well, Tony's at three right now, right?
Right.
Yeah, he would stay at three, you would stay at three. Everybody stays. The cap instead of like you guys did, the cap was seven thousand. The cap would now be six percent. For department heads, nine percent for. Uh. Non-department head, so I mean.
Some people are capped at three percent, some people are capped at six percent, some are capped at nine.
No, 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 if you go right down this list. So.
Currently Tony's capped at three percent.
Right, and Jerry's at five percent, right, right now, Jerry would stay at five percent. And the chief would stay at three percent, they couldn't go over the six percent. That's what, that's how it would do, so the people who are at three percent, six percent, four point three percent, they would still stay. I'm capping, you capped at seven thousand a dollar a month.
Was there anyone who was at the seven thousand you'd cap? Instead of a dollar?
I, I don't, for me, my head would just go and move it down, if it's over nine percent, it goes to nine percent, if it's at. Like, uh, Raymond's at eight point five, he would stay at eight point five. Judy.
Um, first of all, I appreciate you doing this, cause I didn't have time and I wanted to, I wanted to call the Middleton and see what they were all doing for the longevity, because I know that was kinda a source. Um, and I'm happy that you did to see that nobody else is really doing it besides Middleton or besides Verona. Um, so what I would make a motion on is that we do.
We can do a motion, we have a motion on the table.
Okay.
So we have to, if you want something different than what it is, then we have, would have to vote.
I like the idea of the committee, you banning the committee this week, getting together and getting us next week together to talk over, cause tonight to run numbers and say nine, seven, six, four, all that kinds of stuff. I think you guys need to sit down, I think it needs to be a group to sit down and really go through the numbers. Rather than tonight, I was trying to go and try to. Out of our top of our hats, I like that.
Cameron.
I. I think, at least as far as I'm aware, most of your concerns are not budget related, they're. Policy related as it as it relates to. Like like this, the. Thing we approved even before we were doing budget conversations with the grading and the longevity and all that stuff. And then the budgetary thing was like. How to shift us toward. The new policy, if. Uh, it sounds like most of the concern is with, policy is the wrong word, but I don't know what else to call it, um. Most of the concern is with like the longevity and the plan and stuff, and even I see you're, I mean, you, I mean, on page five, you say it would be a hundred and twenty five thousand next year increase if we were to like match everyone the proper longevity. Um. I guess that seems unrelated to the budget.
No, I I'm gonna disagree, it's totally related to budget. It's totally related budget, but you have a. We're voting on a process or a plan that there is absolutely no way we can achieve.
We already voted on the plan. The plan is not part of the budget, that that's, that's where, that's, that's the, the little bit of the thing, because you're, you're, you're right, like, we can't. Pay the plan for all employees next year to get them into the right spot.
And we never.
But we never also said that, we would.
I don't understand why you would have a plan of longevity. And then knowing that we'll never pay it off.
So the the plan was, I think, for new employees coming in, at least. Cause I, as I got it from the department heads. And. The budget part. Is. Shifting people as, you know, closer to the plan, knowing that we can't afford it, hence the seven thousand cap and and that things of that nature. With with all of those salary adjustments for the next year's budget. I'm I'm just, I'm I'm trying to, I don't think we're gonna have a. It's gonna be a really difficult conversation if we're, if we're trying to reconcile like what should be based on the plan, and then like what is in the budget, because they're kind of different things.
Well, I I I'm gonna, there's. I I don't, I I'm gonna disagree on two, when we approved the plan, that was their plan, there was no dollars attached to it, right? We didn't have dollars.
Uh huh.
Okay. So what we approved is they did their work, they did their report. If you go back and actually listen to the tape, I was very clear that we're accepting the report. We're not approving it because it doesn't have numbers tied to it, and we're not talking about budget. When you take a plan and you have dollars that now come to. Having the taxpayers pay. It is, becomes a budget item, and. When this happens, we, I. Yeah, I I I regret that I didn't do this in October, but I was taken by surprise that there was no discussion. On these items, I just assumed because of how. How, how high they were that there would have been discussion, but there wasn't, so that's, that's passed. But that plan is one thing, which is very tied because it directs the budget, employees, even a new employee is gonna look at this and say. Okay. Let's see. I'm looking at your longevity, so in one year, at the end of one year, I'm gonna get another three percent raise. Automatic plus cola raise. That step, in two years, I'm gonna get another longevity raise of three percent plus a cola raise. And year three, I'm gonna get another three percent plus the cola raise. And then in year five, I'm gonna go to two percent, I don't understand. How we can say that, and then we're gonna say to them, sorry, we can't afford to do the three percent, the three percent, the three percent, you're just getting your cola raise. It's tied to budget. Um, so. I I think it is important, now, I don't, like I say, I am open. To discussing this, so we have a modify the plan that actually is. Sustainable within the budget. And to me, to have a plan that isn't sustainable in the budget. Means we're just giving lip talk. Because I can tell you, and you know, and everybody in here, there's no way we're gonna fulfill our requirement. And have a hundred and twenty five grand sitting there, plus. The people who aren't part of. These longevities. Are now gonna want some type of raise. So we're gonna have to do a coal raise, cause that's how that plan is. And the. Uh, the whole grade system is gone. Totally haywire, in my opinion, to, uh. Along a vertical longevity, because now, once you hit ten years, you move up another grade, which means higher pay. And there's no other difference except for being on air, I'll get to you, Mike, let's let the board talk first. Okay, go ahead.
Well, so then, if, if you wanna play back the tape and this was only accepted.
No, I looked at the minutes, it says approval, so that's what we gotta go on, I'm saying my comments for that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Other comments?
I'd love to hear from Mike.
Yeah, I, it's, go ahead, Mike.
So just a couple things, so first and foremost, thanks for having this conversation. I really wish you would have had this conversation back over.
I agree.
Cause it would have given for July, and we gave this to everyone, because this is literally what we wanted to hear and have this conversation at that point, because that was actually taking numbers and putting it to a budget, right, that was our plan.
Well, Michael, I I just wanna say, I brought it up. A number of times at staff meeting, and I brought it up in October, and I brought it up in August.
And you're the only one.
Okay, I'm the only one, I'm sorry, but.
I wouldn't say the only one, but not to this step, that's all I'm saying.
That's true.
The, the other parts, Jay, is that the other communities, I, whether you contacted them or not, I mean, this is one of these right here. This is, this is the twenty-one year plan.
All right, what, what does it say? Read it off, or can we have that? Cause I.
So, so this is adopted by their village board every single year. So I get this in my.
Yeah, but tell me what they, how they do it.
They do it just how we did.
So there is a one year, a three percent, one, what's, what's the breakdown? So I have it.
So, this is just what we did before, but uh, years one, two, and three are dependent upon. The administrator can decide where people fall. So you could hire someone anywhere between one, two.
Okay, that's not a longevity.
Hold on.
All right.
Um, year one gives you a mark, year two is a two and a half percent increase, year three is a two and a half percent increase. Year. Yeah, year uh. Yeah, year five is a two and a half percent increase. Six is not, year seven is a two and a half percent increase, nine is a two percent, two and a half percent increase. And it just keeps going. So this is uh eighteen years.
Okay, and that's, and that's, it's a longevity, it's not the cola.
Minimum two and a half percent increase. The village board, the Wannakee, decides the cola increase. Which goes on top of all of those numbers each year. And in twenty twenty-three, it was four percent. So they increased everybody's pay four percent with those numbers under the side.
A total, so you get a combination of this.
So you get six and a half percent if you were.
Oh, okay.
Last year, that's what they would have received.
Okay.
So, and that's exactly, this is why we went off of, of that type of. Plan, because it was, I mean, it shows, I mean, they've been, they've had this going since two thousand fourteen.
All right, uh, like I say, it's not in their employee handbook. I'll, I'll take a look at that. Yeah, I would appreciate that. You can pass that down.
Verona has the same thing.
No, Verona, I, I talked to him, yeah.
But they have the same thing, but what they do is longevity different. So you still have a scale. But you get to your maximum a little bit earlier in the scale, like their max is eighteen years. Uh, the Wannakee one is eighteen years, Verona's is earlier, you get to your max.
No, it's, it's twenty-one years.
But then you start getting, after ten years, you get an extra one percent. After twelve years, you get an extra one. It, it continues to give them longevity checks.
I talked to Mitch in the HR department. Yeah, I, I'm not gonna, yeah.
Um, I know the Middleton Crossman School District has the same type of format, uh, same type of steps. Where you can go. You're talking about uh, a vertical longevity and a horizontal longevity, that's not what we did. The vertical longevity is for people to apply for those types of increases, right? So, for instance, let's say someone was a five, and they went out and, and got uh, another, maybe a bachelor's degree. Or they got something that was going to help, going to help that position. They could then, they could apply to get moved up to a six with the department head. The department head would then bring it to Brian, have the discussions, and then the builder's board would be the ones to write that they say yes or no to it. It's not like people just get to move up to whatever number they want.
Well, that's not how it shows here.
If you read Brian's memo from our, our plan, it states that in the memo.
Well, I'm just looking at what is for Parks and Rec. Grade eight is three to five years of experience bachelor's degree. Grade nine, bachelor's degree related field, five to ten years related. Experience and relevant certification or advanced degree. Grade ten, bachelor's degree in related field and ten years. Of related experience and relevant certification and degree. So the only difference between grade nine and ten. Is years on, that's a longevity.
But that's someone coming in.
Right, that's like if Mike were designed, we had to replace Mike.
Correct.
We would hire his replacement at an eight, nine, or ten.
On that criteria, that's not where I, I don't get to just move up.
It sounds like if Mike wanted to move up, he'd have to.
Apply for it.
He'd have to apply, and he'd have to open a position, right, for the higher grade.
Okay, so what, what grade are you at right now?
I don't have, none of us have a grade until you approve. Well, okay.
Well, they did in the calculations, I saw.
I think ten, step three on the, from the proposal.
Right, and, there you go, and.
I didn't do that.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, did you apply?
Yeah, we all did. And you approved it in, in July, cause that's what it was. We put the people in positions and you approved it.
No, in July, you, I have. No, I have it right here.
September, it was, it was then in September, whenever we gave you the new grades that would be effective in this year's budget.
Those would be, uh, yeah.
I have you as grade eight, moving up to grade nine. That's what I have, that was in the original, right, and then. In the supplement, they moved you from grade eight up to grade ten.
When they put all the department heads in the same grade, and Brian was no longer a part of this plan.
Right.
Because when you look at the department heads and what they're doing, they're all doing the same thing, just a different department, and have the same responsibilities. They answer to the same types of questions, and the same types of fraud. They have employees, they oversee.
I understand, but he's the top grade, cause he's your boss, he's gonna be more responsibility than everybody.
He's not a grade in any.
Right, cause you had bumped him out.
That we found, the Wannakes, there, there's no administrator in them, cause they, they're contracted. We don't contract. We don't have, we have people contracted that aren't part of that, that formula as well, because they're contracted.
All right, anybody have anything that they want?
Well, I guess, I still, I am seeing this as a separate thing, like it feels like we're going back to now. With stuff in their handbook, right? It, it, you know, you were saying the policy before, I think, but as a handbook. And not the budget for next year.
We're clearly talking about the budget for next year. Right, right now, just let's, we, we, as, as was brought up earlier. We are over the levy limit, right? We have spent too much money. Well, just hear me out. So what we have done is adjusted our general overall budget. Saying, okay, we know right now, none of our police officers, we budget for people to have family health insurance. So when they get it, we have the money, right? Well, we, right, you've read this. So we have taken that and said, well, we don't think our officers are gonna need family. So we're taking the money, the difference between single and family, we're taking that out of the budget. Which then lowers it. And then we say, well, for revenue, we generally don't take revenue and assign it. As a cost, an operating cost. We usually use that to cover. Emergencies or put in it to fund balance. We're taking forty-five thousand of that for the first time that I'm aware of. And we're using that to pay for operating costs. Okay? So to me, the, the other option would be to modify other expenses, which would be salaries. To bring it down so we're under the limit, cause next year, let's just play the worst case scenario. That our, our officers all want family uh, health insurance. And all of a sudden, interest rates go back down to one percent, and we're only making thirty thousand. Instead of a hundred and some thousand on investment. Now we have this huge gap. We're gonna have to either cut people, cut salaries or something, and the question is, that's bad budgeting, in my opinion. We should budget for what we have. Now, it's unfortunate that EMS came in so hot. And we're addressing that, right? We're looking to find ways that that's not gonna happen again. But we, as a group, have to look at it, and for me, I cannot. I just can't support telling people you're gonna get these raises and then not do it. And we know we can't do it. It is gonna be absolutely impossible for us to fulfill. What we're voting on tonight. Absolutely impossible, and I don't think anybody in this room disagrees with that.
I do.
You do? You don't think we can?
No, I don't think we can pay for it, but you're, you're still positing that the policy equals the budget, and I disagree with that.
Forget about the policy.
Okay, good, voting on just the salaries and not the longevity and all the other stuff.
Yes, we are, that is part of the, that is part of the salary.
The budget though, that we're.
Yes, Cameron, how can you not say it isn't? Right, yes.
No, it's. Yes. The doc, yes. Correct, that, that was, that was about. Moving current employee salaries to something closer to the policy, closer to the market pay. And we didn't even do it. We didn't even get to the policy, because, because we.
Yes, Cameron, look at page, look at page two. Look at page two, and you're gonna see percentage increase column. Every amount that over the three percent is longevity and grade increase. Page two, you go down to non-contracted employee wage compensation. Everything that's a percent increase that's over three percent is tied to the longevity. And the grade, the cola was three percent.
Except, we capped everything at step three. So like Mike has been here more than three years.
Well.
So he, so we didn't, we didn't even match the policy.
Agreed, yeah, I'm not even talking, but I'm talking dollars. You said that it's not tied, that we're not, none of our budget is tied to this policy. And I'm saying, right now, six point three percent of Mike's salary increase. Is tied to longevity or grade. That's what it is. Go down to Catherine. Thirteen point six percent is tied to longevity or grade. Go down to Renee, seven point four percent is tied to longevity or grade. Go to Randy, eight, eight point six percent. It, no, this is, I'm, I'm gonna keep it, Mike. We need as a, a board.
I just wanna say, you shouldn't be using any of our names.
It's public record, anybody can do. Yes, and anybody can ask for salaries of public employees. Capital Times used to post all the city of Madison one. You can, there's nothing wrong with that. There, we're public employees, it's open to the public, so. Cameron, every one of those are tied. The only people that isn't are the people who are at three percent. Those are just receiving the cola raised. So it's definitely tied to budget.
If it were, okay, sure, I, it's related to the budget, and I'm.
It is the budget.
But we. I guess we haven't officially said what we're doing with current employees. Except for what we voted for last time, which was the, the proposed adjustments they presented. We did not say that starting in twenty twenty-four, everyone's gonna jump up to their, their appropriate um longevity tier.
Understood that.
For the count for that a hundred and twenty-five you're talking about.
Yep.
Um, like, I think, I think from what I'm understanding from the, the department heads and the employees. When we discuss this at the meeting, is that they aren't expecting that next year, we're gonna magically find a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And they're gonna all be in the right longevity salary. So.
So then why have it?
That's fine, that's a fine conversation to have. I don't think it should exclude us from. Um, getting them closer to the market wages that um, I mean, we know there's a huge deficit, deficiency. And we voted, we voted, or I mean, we approved the, the adjustment. Again, before the EMS stuff come, came in, I get that. Um, but like, we already, we approved the adjustment, but it still didn't even fit in the policy. So if we wanna have conversations on the policy and stuff, I think that's fine. But like, I guess, I'm, I think that feels like a different conversation compared to the proposed employee raises. And you're kind of mixing it together.
I, I, I'm mixing them together because that is what would use to justify the department, the, the raises. That's why.
Sure.
That's simple. All right, any other discussion?
Go ahead, Cameron, one more thing. Um, your, your comment on the seven K cap. The, your, your way back at the top of the discussion, you said one of the options would be to like adjust, like uh, the seven K cap to be at six or nine percent. And said.
Correct.
Uh, that feels like something we really should not consider, because the people who generally ran into the seven K cap. Not all of them. But were already on the lower end of the salary, and so they probably are the ones who are in need of the sharpest. Market adjustment. And so you'd be, you'd be, you'd be punishing the people who are probably in the largest need of a, a market adjustment. By, by capping them lower, cause they, they already got capped lower than they should have been, right? That's why they hit the seven K cap.
Awesome, that was, that was the option that I came up with if people did not want that, it is not.
I know, and I'm, I'm putting it on the record, and whatever happens here, and whatever future conversations, that would be one of the cruelest things I think you could consider.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? So the, what the motion is to accept. The motion was to accept what was presented. So we'll do a roll call vote. Oh, Michael.
Yeah, I'm not sure how to feel about the whole system, especially moving forward to twenty twenty-four. Whether or not how this is gonna happen with the salary strategy that was implemented, and how the pay scale looks. I think it's unsustainable for the village in the long run. Whether we wanna implement these salary increases right now, I don't know. Um. Some of them are needed, but it isn't sustainable moving forward. Now, whether or not that means the committee is formed to rework this now. Or it's just completely reworked for the twenty twenty-four budget and things like that down the road, it's the one other alternative, but. Yeah, I don't, I don't know, it's a, it is a big budget.
Uh, this is my seventh budget, I've always tried to be extremely fair, I can clean that. Some information, or we don't have as much, nothing to mention. Thought we had, for a couple reasons. I'm up for compromising and being fair.
All right, let's do roll call.
No.
Yes.
Does he work one?
Yes.
Does he brother?
No.
Does he written?
Yes.
Just he cut away, no.
No. All right, so it fails. We had, uh, I just suggested two options. It sounded like people are interested in bringing the small group together. Um, this week. Is there a trustee that would be interested?
Me.
Okay. So it'll be, if people are okay, it would be Brian, myself, Cameron, Bobby. And I'll let the department heads um, choose an at-large. Now, for the meeting, because we have to finish something, there were three dates thrown out there. There's next Monday, we have a planned meeting at six thirty, there's four of us that will be there.
Cancelled plan for December, we pushed it to January.
We did?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I guess that's, we can still meet that meeting, that, for this, we can do a special meeting on next Monday. At six o'clock. We didn't cancel finance, did we?
We'll get to Tuesday.
Yeah, yeah, so we can do it Tuesday, the fifth, at six o'clock. Or Monday, the eleven.
I prefer, I prefer not to push it out till the eleven.
Okay, I, I'm just.
Like, I prefer next week versus two weeks or not, but.
I can make it Tuesday. I can make the port work.
Either of those days. I can't, I don't know the schedule right, oh, I see that. Sarah? Oh, I see that. Sarah?
Is thirty minutes gonna be long enough?
Yes.
What time would you have it at?
No, I would have it at six.
Well, there's large discussion, thirty minutes might not be long though.
Well, I, 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 I'm hoping the work is done at the committed level. If, I think if the committee has something, I think the board would probably. I think we have all the different ideas coming from this meeting. Yeah, I'm thinking at six.
I could come. I would really like to put my guard up.
And what time is that at?
Seven.
You know, I, I, I'm pretty confident that we'd be able to do.
If it's not a ten, till ten o'clock then I can.
Yeah, I, I'm, I am hoping th- this will be basically, uh, call to order, roll call, public comment, general business.
That's it.
And I'm hoping the group, uh, can come up with consensus. So here, you just hear the play, and if you wanna make modifications, that would be fine, but. I, I don't think people have a huge interest in doing a lot of little thinking things. I think we're talking big issue.
I prefer Tuesday and wait for sure.
Say it again.
I would prefer next Tuesday versus waiting till the last.
Okay. So is Tuesday workable then?
Can Monday night be done?
No, I guess we canceled the, the last meeting, pushed it to January eighth. So that's the fifth?
Tuesdays and the.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Do I have a motion that states that, uh, the small group will get together this week? And we will meet on December fifth at six o'clock with a special board.
And that'd be, well, it's not even a future agenda item. Is that something we can have in discussion or possible action on the twenty twenty-four? Cause that's kind of the category we're in right now.
Yeah, that's what we're, we're, we, we've.
Just making sure.
Yeah, it's definitely on the general file.
I'm gonna make a motion that the small groups gets together this week and we meet as a village board on Tuesday, December fifth at six and five.
I'll sign it though. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the polls same, so move. I would then suggest that we have. What's that?
So we can't do any of the other ones then?
Well, no, that, that's what's gonna be my suggestion is that we postpone E through H until the, uh, December fifteenth. Did we vote on the last one or no?
Yes.
Okay, yes, ma- if you can make a motion, that'd be great.
I made a motion to postpone E through H until December.
All right, I got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all the polls same, so move. Number seven, discussion, impossible action, employee vacation payout or carryover approval. Who wants, uh, take this?
Uh, so this topic was, this was brought to my attention, uh, last week on a matter pertaining to one of our public works department employees. Who currently has a leave balance, um, in excess of what they are, by our policy manual, able to carry over to the new calendar year. Um, obviously, given the timelines left in this year, it's not feasible for them to take that time off and still have coverage met at the wastewater treatment plant. Um, so the individual approached, uh, their public works director. Um, to discuss options that might be feasible for how they can resolve this and still potentially either be receiving of that leave. Since they did a, did the village a service by not taking vacation to cover while they didn't have backup. Um, or figure out a way to find a happy medium where some of it can be carried over in the new year, some can be paid out. Uh, whatever's the most amenable to the, the board.
What's the employees block?
Yeah, that was the preferred option.
All right, let me ask you, how much time? For the month of December, could we give this employee off?
I think that's probably best answered by Jerry based on coverage and current vacation approvals within his department. I don't think I can answer that.
All right.
Jerry's here. Oh, yeah, he is.
I'm looking at the calendar. In two weeks, doing a current schedule, if it will be worked.
So you think ten days would be reasonable?
Fifteen.
Sit down to a hundred and. Sixteen.
Yeah.
And Mike.
And I guess, uh, my second, and it has. Nothing to necessarily do. I think it's, it's a precedence we don't wanna get into. I understand the circumstances and I certainly don't wanna rip off an employee. The question I have is what are we going to do or what steps are we gonna do in the future that this doesn't happen again? I mean, it is.
I would suggest, uh, establishing a scale for, uh, retained employees.
So someone who has six weeks of vacation as a new employee?
No, that's not a problem. That's the person hired to use the second.
Oh. Okay.
Three, the last, uh, four years.
Yeah, okay.
What would we do with another employee, like other departments? Like, how can we prevent this not happening in, in all the other departments?
Well, that was, I think we, I think we have to set something up.
Right, and we're setting a precedent.
But, but this is a different requirement because we're required by D and R requirements to have individual there work. We don't require by anybody's required to have somebody working the park maintenance, like a library. Then we are, but we are bound by different regulatory requirements for the specific position, which doesn't set a precedent. It is, it's in its own little world, is what it's mine.
Well, I, I think you're correct on that. My concern is what stops even the park, the parks or rec employee? Or anybody not taking their vacation and then wanting to cash it in?
Well, increase though.
But they weren't under a requirement that they had to show up to work. So that's what we can tell them. Well, you just chose to work. He has to be there. That's the difference. That's the major difference in this, in this, in this whole idea. You're not setting a precedent. He passed on the, at his job.
Do department heads monitor? Not PTO.
Hmm, for their respective departments.
So we needed an individual to be there.
But like Jerry's, like, as Jerry stated, that they lost the other employee on an unplanned resignation to a different entity. And they had a delay in finding a replacement. And then there's training that they must undergo in order to be certified, able to be managing that without the other individual present.
Sure, like, see, at least two, at least two weeks this year then.
Are people comfortable with that? Giving them two weeks off and then the rest cashing in? Yes.
Carrying over the forty? Then you can't, like, everyone can carry over forty.
Oh.
Yeah.
So it'll be two, two and two.
One, six.
Well.
So he uses two.
Correct, minus forty.
So it'll be one, it'll be one twenty depending.
Okay. I, so, okay, so he'll take two, he'll take two weeks off. He'll carry one week over and cash in the remaining three weeks.
Which is three thousand.
I can't guarantee that he's gonna be able to go.
No, I understand that, but that's gonna be the account, right?
Yes, which is for, were your motion for, what is, I would use.
Could we make this, like, exception where he can carry another forty, extra forty over?
Yeah, but then I'm just worried we're gonna get the six weeks from next year plus the next two that'd be need. Like, I, I think that's a good idea if we could figure out how to get him off, but if, it's, I'm guessing he didn't take any vacation this year. If he's got six weeks and all of his city.
He didn't take so, but you gotta remember that he carried over forty hours.
Oh.
Last year also.
Okay.
But he only have eight weeks vacation.
Yeah.
That's two months. Great.
I don't, I don't mind worrying it that way. That you will, we will try to schedule him off for two weeks. We'll carry one week over and any unused vacation will be cashed in. Is that?
So that's a lot if he doesn't take off any time, then he's only carrying over forty hours.
Yeah, but. The difference is in six hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I mean, I'm completely fine.
I'm just, I'm, we've gotta do some, we have to try something. And then we have to look at this and kind of figure it out in the picture.
I will make the motion that we will pay out the employees' vacation and, uh, vacation that he doesn't use and can't carry over.
I second that motion.
All right, I have a motion. Yeah, it'll, it'll work. Uh, any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the polls same. All right, number eight, discussion impossible action regarding the date of the December village board. It falls, I believe, on Christmas.
Yeah, it's Christmas.
Any of us wanna be here on Christmas? You pay time ahead. You'll get half a half on what you're getting paid for tonight.
But with the Justin.
Well, we.
You have Justin the twenty-sixth.
Oh, no, we're only need the eleven.
Yeah, the elevens would be ideal.
It's not taxes up for.
And that's our backup date anyways.
So the fifty and the eleven?
Three weeks in a row.
So that'll be the backup in case we don't figure out the last budget stuff on the fifth. That'll be to get on the eleven.
Yeah.
And that would be the regular word.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
I, it does seem kind of quick. I would think maybe we wanna do the eighteen, and I guess we'll.
Yeah, that's the week before Christmas and so.
Oh, it's okay. I, I can go either way.
Brian, you should have put January on your.
Well, we'll talk about that on the eleven or the eighteen.
Correct. All right, everybody okay with, um, having the board, moving the board meeting to the December board meeting to December eleventh?
Yes.
Do I have a motion? Uh, I would like to make the motion that we move the December board meeting to December eleven.
Okay.
Our motion is second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I, all the polls same, so moved. All right, can I have a motion to go into closed session?
I'll make the motion to go into closed session.
Second. I have a motion and a second to go on to close session and roll call vote.
Uh, sorry, Doc, you motion?
Yeah.
And then starting with.
I did not catch, okay.
All right, thank you. Um, trustee calculator. Yes, trustee Brian one.
Yes.
Trustee Paul McAlkey.
Yes.
Trustee Brooklyn.
Yes.
Trustee Brian.
Yes.
Trustee Walker. Yeah, trustee, they're running.
Yes. Okay, the village board is back into, well, the, the village board is now on a closed session. Do I have, uh. A motion regarding the. Uh, Cross Plains Fire Department municipal agreement.
I'd make the motion that the village not approve the fire board agreement as presented. We would like the fire board to revisit the formula for number jurisdiction expenses.
All right, I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the polls same, so move. All right, future agenda items?
Me, we're gonna start with something.
There's any cause.
I thought, yes, I thought we were the best.
Oh, would you wanna?
Well, what, what, when did we have, when did?
December eleventh is the due date. We have to have a memo to opt out by.
That's probably too late.
Yeah.
Oh, uh, we should probably have a.
Do we, do we need to consider it? I mean, if the water is fine, then why would we wanna get involved in the class action? So we're gonna test them very really, if your water's fine, you get nothing.
No, no, I, no, I, we, we, that's, we can't discuss, discuss it, cause it was on there. But the, I guess the question, what I would do is I thought how we left it is Brian is gonna opt out. Unless there's a problem, we'll put it on the village board and then have a discussion.
As long as that works, okay.
That's what I.
It's probably not ideal, but certainly. Take no action.
Yeah, yeah.
Taking no action.
Is the same thing.
Yes. You good with that?
I don't.
Anybody wanna tap that discussion? All right. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn, sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the polls, thank you very much. I know it was a rough meeting. All right, so I may not be able to make the eleventh meeting. I'm just gonna head that. Okay.